All right, you can call over at all calls please.
Edwards?
Yep.
Now we...
Here.
Simpson?
Here.
Far?
Yeah.
Stark?
Yes.
All rise, take your pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, made invisible with the re-.
All right, get a motion to approve the agenda as written.
All votes.
All those in favor?
Uh...
Okay, get a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
The move.
Any discussion? So mine stays the same?
Yep.
That I asked you last night?
Checks in the mail because uh we're getting our property tax at the end of the month.
Okay, so...
So that's normal, how it works.
All right, so the large expenditure versus revenues, Cindy, I'd asked him about that. It seemed like a huge switch. I didn't know if we had that accounted for. On to your general fund.
How we wired it.
You had a $318,000 expenditure for the month. We're trying to figure out where all that was going.
But it was, it's just our normal...
Next in October, we'll get the big property taxes. That's usually about averaged about $460,000 average last three years for going into the general fund. Property taxes, so that general fund will be bumped up in September, or October, excuse me.
So that'll put the balance back up, but you're questioning what the expenditures were?
Yeah, that's... Because if it doesn't get bumped up till the end of October, we have another expenditure on it. Check any files and check the expenditure amount, it's not gonna look good.
Well, can I have your voice listed here, so it's something?
Any other questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Hi.
Committee reports?
Just skipped five.
I did? Oh, I did. Receiving file communications petitions or remonstrances. Hey, much for my sugar.
I thought maybe skipping on purpose?
Maybe I did. In my mind, I blocked it out. We have received the retirement letter from our forever long-held street superintendent, Rick Erickson. And Cindy is definitely gonna miss that young man. He's done great things for the city, so... Um, I also got emailed, I don't know if you guys got all this too, the Van County Title Company is going to have a grand open house, I guess, for all the remodeling is done for Thursday, September 19th and Friday, September 20th from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Moving on to committee reports.
We had a business-type activities meeting at 6 o'clock tonight to discuss how garbage pickup has been going on with J and R Enterprises. I have just some of the concern, the changes or anything that was going on, so we got that pretty well settled. We've got a couple of things to work on, but that's about it.
Any other committee reports? Moving on to citizens input. Tom, now you are up.
All ready?
All ready!
That would be at least, you know, 15, 20 minutes.
I'm waiting to put you to the end.
No, that's all right. Okay, so uh, well, just so you all know, there's a broadband project in town because I still get people that uh don't have a clue.
That's why they just wag those over?
They're still, they're still out there, yet so uh... There's, there's six, or there's six colored zones. If you went and signed up, I won't ask you if you signed up for the sites or the uh, but if you signed up for that, you'd see the six colored zones and those represent also the, the zones where the distribution's gonna come out of the hut. The hut is located in the central office, it's in the red zone. It's just south of the distribution building, block and a half, high upon hill. It's in the city-owned parking lot and that's basically the heart and the brains. The building's done, the groundings done, a lot of the racks have been installed and ready to go. So now we're just waiting for some of the electronic equipment that's on order and will be received and different contractors will be putting their equipment in that hut to finish it out. So that's what's gonna be going on in the next few months. Right now, eighty-two percent of the loop, the loop that goes around town in the circle sketch, all the zones, is done. They still have uh, a lot of drops to do. We had about sixteen hundred and seventy-five requested site surveys. Six hundred and fifty have been completed, which is about forty percent, so we're doing pretty good on that. Right now, there's a hundred and fifty services that have been ordered where people have actually gone on and decided whether they want an internet, television or a phone. We actually had to come up with a new method, the method that was in there worked well for the site surveys, but it wasn't as probably easy for those that weren't as tech savvy to get through and get through the process for ordering. So that's been simplified, that just came out yesterday, I think, or the day before. We did open up the office at fourteen twelve First Avenue this week. I call them the DTG, the downtown girls, you know, I'd stop in and see them. There's three of them there that work to get their floor rad taken this week and uh, we feel real lucky. We got a real good group that understands customer service really well and they're excited about getting this thing going and helping the community. I think as far as the project overall, if the weather holds up, we might be lucky and be turning on some people late this year. More than likely, it's probably gonna fall into the spring of next year. Kind of depends on how fast some of this other equipment. We, we have multiple partnerships in this thing. We're a partnership, we're an owner and edit equipment at CFU for the video. That's where we're gonna get video services from and that'll get transported down here using either ION or possibly WEN. Both of those are gonna provide us pricing for internet and internet transport, video transport. We wanna have at least two probably on, connected with us so that we have diverse and reliable service come into the town. On that main trunk line, we have two lines that are gonna run out from the hut that will pick up points. It's kinda in the southwest area where we're gonna pick up basically the outside world and uh... ION's gonna be playing a key part. We're gonna have them do our billing for us and uh, we're probably gonna be having them do the operational part with their technicians, at least to start out with. The billing agreement's only a two-year agreement. We're gonna have to come up with a new billing agreement, I would say fairly soon and this is the one that I'd be looking at that would basically price ENCODE for the entire city. We need, we need something that can do everything. ENCODE can't do telecom and the telecom billing that ION is using can't do the utility side. So there's some out there that do it all and want to share the cost, electric utility, have to pay maybe a third, communication a third, maybe the city a third. This software is probably fine, they're $600 dollars to invest in. So that's in the future. And then all these other agreements will probably be five-year agreements and uh, let's see. We do have an agreement with consortia, uh, which is helping us with the legalities of hooking up to the television system and the federal communication. There's a lot of things that have to be done and they're doing it for a lot of utilities, so we just decided to let them add us to their list. Right now, they only have, they got three main drop crews and I don't know if they'll, they'll be done maybe in two or three weeks with the main crews and then they have one drop crew in that's taking from the trunk lines to the individual homes and businesses. I think they're gonna try to bring in another drop crew. They're doing about fifty to sixty drops a week right now and they're, they're keeping up. We had to kinda change the process. Patriot Communications is doing the site surveys, they're out of Sea Rapids. This is a little bit different animal than what they're used to because they usually will work with telecoms where nobody had a choice. You're gonna get hooked up no matter what, so if you need to contact them to get your site survey done, you're gonna get your phone cut off. We're a little bit different because you don't have to have a site survey. Site survey's free, they come in and look and see where to put the clamshell on the outside of the building, that's where the drop crew will run to. We put the duct in free, we won't put any fiber in it unless somebody signs up for services, so... It's kind of an investment for the homeowner, basically, so they're fine and ready. They don't have to take the service, but at least they got the duct in in case they have to sell or have somebody else live there that may want the services, the ducts there, we can go ahead and pull the fiber in probably any time of the year. Hopefully, everybody, we're, we're offering free Wi-Fi for those that sign up by December twenty twenty. Sign up for internet service, you get free Wi-Fi for life. If you decide you wanna not have internet service, you won't get it for life anymore and you'll have to pay for it later if you sign back up. It's probably a $9.99 a month value for those that sign up and stick it out, so... And the speeds, our slowest speed we're offering is a hundred megabit. I don't think most incumbents can probably do that on a regular basis. They probably can for some of the businesses, but, and we go up to a gigabyte, so if you really, if you got a lot of things in your house and a lot of kids and a lot of stuff going on, I encourage you to look at the price for the gigabyte. I think it's a hundred and nineteen bucks, where the, the hundred is probably about seventy. And if you start looking at the cost per megabyte and do the math, we're at seventy cents and most of the others that are serving town are a buck and a half or more per megabyte to the speed. And they're not giving you free Wi-Fi, they got a lot more fees, so people aren't able, what we're finding is people just look at the price and try to make their decision based on the price. Well, you gotta look at the value of what you're getting for that now and uh, we've got our pricing so that we can make this thing pay for itself in say twenty-five or thirty years. It's not a quick payback, that's why nobody's put it in today because it costs money to put the fiber in. And uh, that's what the utility municipal does, when the private sector won't do it, they'll go ahead and put it in and let it have thirty-year payback and provide the service, that's what's important. They don't care about a six-year or three-year payback for shareholders, so... I encourage you to go stop at the office, just test the staff there and see if they can answer all your questions, if you have any. They've got the pamphlets there, I guess you should have this, I think you gotta hand it out. This kinda shows you what we've been doing for advertisement side. On page four and page eight, five, there's blue checks on there and that's stuff that we've actually taken on and are using right now. If you go down there, you can see the glass windows have some pretty nice drawings in there. And they got some things inside, they got a TV in there so that actually when we get fiber, we'll be able to show people, hey, here's your channels, what you can get. And they'll also be able to use it as a tool that if somebody called and says, oh, my TV's not working, the staff will be able to look at their TV and say, okay, it's, it's not the network, it's your problem if they got service there. So it's kind of a helpful troubleshooting tool as well for when people call in, so... I don't know, that's about it, if I should have any questions.
I was curious how long people have to sign up for the site survey to get the free...
Well...
I mean, how long are they doing site surveys?
Well, see, we'll be doing site surveys the rest of this year, for sure. And if Central Cable gets done with all the duct this year and all the parents, if they, depends on how fast they get all the people hooked up, we're allowing that Central Cable to spill into spring, they give quite a few thousand dollars back, not to hell of a penalty if they're not done by December. So, but what it boils down to, it'll be free up until the time the crews are gone and we don't have anybody here to do it and then we'll be waiting till we get enough to make it worthwhile because we're not gonna bring somebody back for onesie twosies.
Sure. And you've got, did you say eighteen hundred?
Sixteen hundred and seventy-five have requested site surveys and we got forty percent of them done.
Okay.
Now. Our initial contract with Patriot was only for eight hundred and eighty-eight, eight hundred residential and eighty-eight businesses. We'll probably be hitting that before maybe the end of the year and then I kinda wanna extend their contract service because they're doing a really good job, they're really good at it and if we don't use them, then we'll be using ION and uh, we can do that. But Patriot's got it down to a pretty good science and they're very good communicating with the people in there. I've had a lot of good comments on them and there's a few spots in town or in some of these residences that they do not have an outlet, a grounded outlet or any outlet where you gotta have power for this equipment for to run the ONT and then that's gonna be in the house, so there's gonna be a few spots that if they sign up for services, we'll probably be having to get some electrical, get an outlet extended so that they can have power. Now, if you take the phone service, you're automatically gonna get a battery backup on the phone service, but it's no longer a requirement to provide a battery backup, so there's not battery backup if you don't take the phone service. And I don't know, it might be a $4.99 a month if you wanna have it. It's offered as a service, but you don't have to take it. And if your house doesn't have electricity, you know, it would ride for a while. I don't know how long the battery backup would last, but uh, you know, it's kind of a judgment call. There's additional things with Wi-Fi, you get extenders. If you got property that you maybe wanna serve a garage outside or something, you might be able to do that with a mesh extender. There's one that comes with the package for the first TV, but if you got other things you gotta do, then there's a fee that can be added on and we'll probably let Patriot help you decide whether you're gonna need that or not. We don't wanna have everybody automatically assume they have to do it because if they don't need it, then we don't need to buy the equipment and they don't have to have the expense. But that's gonna be, you know, kinda down the road when you find out just what you need later. So I think we're gonna probably have some special meetings for like the Lutheran home. They were interested in seeing what we can do for them and we need to go visit with them and find out how are they served now. It'd be nice to be able to just go to them and say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna give you the service and then you're gonna disperse it and do your own billing, which is probably what they're doing now. But it might come down to the wiring now, I know the Lutheran home's nonprofit and I don't think MediaCom's gonna allow us to use their lines that are running through the facility now, but you know, we'll have to see. Some of these are gonna be just handled case by case, depending on what the needs are. There'll be a lot of landlords that are gonna have promises that in the trailer court, they may put up a post and have four ONTs on it that'll serve four different home trailers. They wanna put them on the post so if somebody pulls out there, not taking the equipment with them outside of the trailer, so... There's gonna be different installs for different locations. I haven't heard yet about the hospital on what they wanna do. I know the county has asked us to run fiber to them. They do have USA Communications doing probably their internet and fiber now, but they want reliability, so they want another service provider as well, so... And I don't know if the hospital, what they're gonna wanna do. They probably have the biggest need for speed when they got x-rays and they gotta download them and upload them. With our service, the download and upload speed's the same, it's really different business, so if you're gonna have to come in at two in the morning to try to upload your stuff, you should be able to do it anytime and uh, the speed's the same in a lot of places. The download would be the fastest and the upload would be ten percent or something of the download speed. Our's gonna be a hundred up, hundred down and then I think it goes to two fifty and then it goes to a gig. And uh, thank you, Mr. Ward, for signing up for the gig.
Had to, I got a lot of devices.
I did too. So, I've done my site survey, I've signed up for services. They run the fiber to my clamshell outside, what happens next?
Well, Patriot then will come back and they'll do determinations in the house. So when the fiber gets installed in the drop dug, they'll be doing determinations inside the home and it'll be, you know, homes that they're familiar with that. So once they get that done, then it'll be sounded back. So we're gonna have some test cases where there'll be some people selected to try it out, make sure it works. Our technology be doing all this for us as our consultant. Once they get the system up and running and true and tested, that's when they'll turn the reins over to ION to operate it. And I'd like to think once you get a new fiber system in, that's not where the problems are gonna be. The problems are gonna be probably in the house, depending on what equipment people are using. That's why we're trying to make sure they're getting our routers and things like that, so that we're not gonna be the bottleneck on it. And that's why the, the office staff has to be pretty well-trained. I hear some of the stories that CFU's gone through, a lot of the questions they get have nothing to do with broadband. People just call them to ask them anything, you know, a lot of the time it's, hey, is your power turned on? Is your TV turned on? A lot of simple stuff that, you know, some of this technology just is overwhelming, I guess, for us older people that aren't as used to carrying a cellphone around everywhere with you in the community.
So I got three bedrooms, a living room, a basement, a garage, whatever. So does each one of those TVs need to have a separate box for video?
Yeah, I think so. Every kid TV probably has its own set.
So do they run all new cabling for each one of those boxes? They try to?
Well, that might be what the Wi-Fi comes in. You probably won't have to wire any, all that stuff, you'll be doing it wireless. And that'll depend on the distance as to whether you need the mesh extender to get it there or not.
So the boxes go in the rooms, they're all wireless too?
Well, it'll go into the, from the clamshell into the ONT and then there'll be the set-top box. And from that point on, it's gonna be wireless after it gets into there.
Okay.
And there'll be people that already have their house wired up and they may wanna reuse that and that's not a problem, that can be done too.
You're looking at me when you say that?
Eh, no.
So you're thinking some beta testing might be...
Oh yeah, there's gonna, that's gonna be going on for sure and we may be using the, the ZOIN administers in the different areas. As they're not gonna turn this thing loose to the public, depending on some of the functions.
So I, so the router, the Wi-Fi router, do we have to get new ones of those? Do you guys?
Uh, I can't remember on the, we might be off. Yeah, you get the free Wi-Fi router, I need more than the basic, that'll be there.
I just went and got one and it's like a...
Did you keep your receipt?
I mean, this was like a year ago. I mean, it's a good one though that has like more things on it, so it extends it further?
You know, we tried to make a router that would be better than anybody just going and not knowing anything about it. It's the router could be the problem with the house.
But we want to go with yours and then do you have like boost for months to get further out?
Well, there's mesh extenders and to, to get beyond the normal run. I don't know, the distance and feed Patriot's gonna know that and they'll be able to help you out. And they have to have a person there for the site survey, they won't do it by themselves, you gotta have somebody there. That's one of the reasons why it's kinda hard for them because, you know, people are working and they gotta schedule this stuff and somebody can be there. We're trying to make the signup easier so that people can self-schedule because, you know, sixteen hundred people trying to get site surveys.
Do I need to go back on?
No, you shouldn't have to go back on, but you can always call the office and find out, they probably help you with the status of maybe where you're at. Cause I don't know, Patriot's kinda doing this in, in their own method for groups and they're kinda doing it so that the guys putting the drops in can actually go down, 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 get them more efficiently. Whoever gets installed first and there may be a price for the ones that had the most, I don't know. Everything's free right now, so there wasn't really any reason to give anybody a price, but the survey's free, the duct is free. Until you actually sign up for services and order something, that's, and you're not gonna pay until you got it hooked up and it's actually working. So most of the billing probably won't, they probably won't have a revenue coming in till very late, the end of this year or uh, next spring when people are getting turned on. And a lot of people think, you know, like I've heard them say, think that, yeah, we're just taking over MediaCom's wires or Centrum's wires now. It's, it's the long process right now, people just have to be patient to get through it all.
So don't pull out your flags in your yard yet, correct?
No, that's happened too.
Because people didn't ask.
Get that question for a while. Someone said they had to move it.
You can move it. Yeah, well, just let them know where the flags are.
So, you guys come around or whoever comes around and pulls the flags?
Don't pull the flag when they got the duct in and they're done. Now, there's gonna be holes out there and they'll fill them and they'll be coming back in the spring to receive probably a second time. They're not gonna get everything done perfect the first time. I've had a lot of calls on people here lately with the rain, the, the grounds opened up, you know, we let Far know, they let Central Cable. They, they take care of things pretty quick and that's the other thing. We're gonna try to put out an announcement that if you got a problem, call the office and they will be able to log all the things that need to be checked and uh, they'll give that over to the contractor. They've been really good at responding to things, really, when I call them up, they go and check it probably within that hour. They don't wait.
Well, they've actually, I think they've been doing a pretty good job. It's, for what all they've been doing is pretty, very small impact, I guess, for the landscape.
So a part of, the problem that they've had has been the locates, Vanguard's doing the gas and sometimes they don't actually get it where the gas line is and I S T C or something, there's another group that's doing the cable and the phone and uh, those guys aren't the sharpest knives in the drawer.
So there's uh, about twenty, well, sixteen hundred...
Site surveys.
Twenty-two hundreds was the original number of places that we were gonna potentially have to sign up and we're, we're only about four, five hundred short of, six hundred short?
That's really good.
Six hundred short of having the entire town at least signed up for a site.
If, if more come in than what we have, we're gonna do them all.
My point is that there's only six hundred people that we need to contact to have literally every single resident or business in town have a duct in, ready for service. I mean, that's unheard of.
How'd they come up with twenty-two hundred?
It's a good question. I've heard that number before. So...
That's our overall utility count.
There you go, there's the answer.
So it's an encouragement for the last six hundred people or so to give a call?
Yeah, well, I know there's people that just are putting the duct in just for the value of the home.
Absolutely.
And there's nothing wrong with that, they, they should do that now, it's, it's gonna help them later with whatever they gotta do. And somebody else might come in and say, hey, I want service, great, we got the duct in. Should be pretty painless to get it installed, you know?
There's really no reason why someone shouldn't call for a site survey.
Actually, no, I don't know why you wouldn't want a site survey, period. If you weren't planning on putting anything in.
It doesn't get any better than free.
No, well, we've heard people say they, they're gonna get charged and all this, so I don't know where the anti-propaganda's coming from, but uh...
So for all the people out there listening, site survey is free.
That would be the headline.
Dump to your house is free when you sign up, so... Good enough, I did my plug, my painless plug for you, so... All right, any more questions for Tom? Thank you very much, young man, appreciate it.
Thanks for the update, Tom.
All right, moving on to old business. Need motion to receive Anderson Creek flat, final flat, recommend sending it to the... Need motion to receive Anderson Creek plat, final plat, recommend sending it to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Sorry.
Chris?
Have received a copy of the final plat here, if anybody wishes to look at it. It has thirty-three units altogether on here. Just got, just got finished with working on the tail end of first wrap of the developer's agreement. If council goes ahead and makes a recommendation tonight to build Planning and Zoning, Planning and Zoning will handle it at the end of this month. Then it has to skip a council meeting under state statute. And then it comes back to the council as an ordinance for three readings. However, if council wishes to do so, and you may wanna consult with your city attorney about that, about waiving the second and third readings. There are some items that also need to actually go along with this, along with the process. We did get our survey report, or what was it? There was a survey, right? Certificate. I dropped. Surveyor's certificate. We got that. Treasurer's? Certificate. And also, there has to be a resolution for the dedications. And the dedication's being the city takes care of the utilities, the water, the sewer, the street maintenance, that sort of thing. That has to be part of the resolution when it comes back to the council. In order to kick off the final portion, asking for an affirmative vote, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions?
Is that a roll call or is that just a simple?
Oh, it's just a simple motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. First step done. All right. Now is the time. We're gonna discuss some ECOC home buying grant program. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, once again. Had, and I was contacted by Matt Johnson from Cedar Valley Bank Trust. Actually, there is a program, a grant program through the East Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund and the Federal Home Loan Bank of Des Moines. It's, it seems to be equivalent to what was done for the Maple Lane subdivision. Is probably the best way to describe it as far as down payment assistance for first-time home buyers. Looking at the terms of the development agreement on the TIF, you would be able to do this if you wish to participate in this for, for the Anderson Creek subdivision because it's in an urban renewal district. There seems to be a lot of caveats, but it is very doable for the city of it.
Is this a first come, first served basis to get the money?
It would be, but you have to also income qualify.
And is it come on an LMI?
Yes, it's the LMI portion. So, you have to, have to be low-margin income in order to qualify.
And the houses that are going to be built here are going to be below that LMI threshold likely? I mean, plan?
They would be, but they would be in one location. It would be in the Anderson Creek subdivision.
And you can't exceed a certain number on that cost of the house?
Correct.
Proposing about ten or anything?
Yes, that's what Matt Johnson discussed with me was about ten.
Four hundred and seventy thousand dollar house.
Right. And it would be located approximately in the lot twenty-three, seventeen through twenty-three lot area along, I believe, the proposed Viking Drive area of the plat.
So, you're saying how many lots?
Or eight, ten lots, but not, not just that. There's some, there's four more other lots on the other side. So, there would be a mixture of some of those houses together.
Seems like we're using LMI for a lot of different things.
Because you do qualify in this subdivision.
That's not an inlet, or that's not a supply of money that ends somewhere?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
It does. On the developer's agreement, it is what I received from Bob Johnston is exactly that a portion of the subdivision infrastructure goes back to the developer for his cost over a period of fifteen years since when he extended. The other portion that the city retains is very specifically designated for LMI projects in the urban renewal district, in that area that you serve, that you receive the TIF for community-wide benefit. That approximate amount is looking to be about four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars on that over fifteen years on the other side of it. And I, it's just a draft right now that I just only sent back to Mr. Catchen just this afternoon. It looks like it's gonna be maybe one point one, one point two million dollar overall investment.
So, the entire four hundred thousand that the city retains, not all of it has to be spent in that?
No.
Just has to be for community development, but a portion of this can be used to help?
Correct. Not all.
Energize housing, I guess.
Right. It's either going to be used in this area or some of it could be split for that or it could be, has to be a community-wide benefit. The reason, another way, another program we did that for was on Third Street. That was considered a community-wide benefit because of access to the hospital. It's not an endless supply of money, no. It actually affects your general fund. But in a way it doesn't because this was not annexed into the city limits prior to this subdivision. So, you will see the benefit of the taxation base of it. But what's going to happen is that the present value right now, which is one hundred thousand, one hundred dollars, that's the frozen base somehow. That's what it's going to be. So, any?
For the next fifteen years.
For the fifteen years. It's gonna be frozen and locked in at one hundred thousand, one hundred dollars for that whole subdivision that just got developed for fifteen years. In year sixteen, whatever the value is, that's what you'll see in your tax base. So, you're gonna have to wait for that, but at that time you won't be able to use TIF again because it'll already be developed.
So, there's four hundred thousand that?
It's a frozen base.
Is that something that has to be at next? My mind just drew a blank with our next budget?
No. You already will receive property taxes on that, just one hundred thousand, one hundred dollars. And you will continue to do so for the life of the TIF as long as it's there. But, and so will the school, so will the county, so will the fire department. Everybody's going to have it locked at that value. Any increase now with the building of houses, people living there, that's going to come. That difference in taxes is gonna come all back to the city. That's where you pay the developer this portion and the city then retains it. And we're very restricted on what we do with that. Either a program like this or something for the entire community. Did I lose anybody?
Nope.
Okay. Is it a bad thing this way?
So, we actually don't hand out ten thousand dollars per lot?
Well, you do, but you don't. Everybody has to meet the requirements for that lot. And the bank will be doing the venue process of that. And also ECOC. If they don't, then, if they don't meet the federal requirements of LMI, then they won't be able to participate in the program.
But if they do?
Mm-hmm.
Then they get?
They could.
Ten thousand, up to ten thousand dollars off the price of their lot.
Or it's, well, it wouldn't be off.
It's actually twenty-five.
It'll go towards the purchase of the lot.
Correct.
Just towards the purchase of the lot.
Of the lot or the construction of the home.
It'll be there twenty percent down on their house. Because that would be for a two hundred thousand dollar house.
I'm glad it encourages the small or the young families or whatever to build and get what they want.
There are a couple of communities that have already done this. I know there's definitely one in Western Iowa that's did this. Also, I believe it was Shelby, Simley, out in Western Iowa. Also, Palo also did this program as well.
Some projects, I don't know about, I don't know if this one is one, but some projects require LMI in order to access some government grants, federal funding assistance.
So, one of my concerns I did have with Matt about this is I didn't want, and this is just maybe me just, this is Chris Ward the person talking, not Chris Ward the city administrator, all right? Just wanna be clear about that. I was concerned that, okay, are you gonna have people in a situation where they're maybe, maybe house-rich and then not have any furniture in it, you know, because the payment is so much if you're LMI and to do that? He explained to me by doing this program, you could potentially eliminate the private mortgage insurance payment on that and have some equity on that house. So, that kind of put me as an individual, okay, at ease, but that's neither here nor there for this program. But it was just my concern that didn't want someone to be set up.
Could we use some of this LMI money to put towards advertising our developments or our community to draw people in to purchase these houses and?
The answer to that question is yes.
Think that would, I don't, I could, I, I've heard, I've heard a few people talking about this and I don't think it matters, but that if these homes are one seventy-five or less and that brings down the value of some of the other homes in the area.
But they're still gonna have to conform to the covenants of the development. I mean, there's still gonna be?
But it's still a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar home when the one across the street is three fifty. And so, when they come in and do an appraisal, then they, they take the recent ones that are similar and then they divide it out and that's your appraisal.
But if you have, if you have a five hundred thousand dollar house and a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar house, they aren't similar.
Okay.
So?
I mean, if it wouldn't, that, that was some of, I've heard that twice, that they were concerned, well, if I put my three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home across the street from one of these one seventy-fives, that just devalued my three hundred and fifty thousand.
I would say that the biggest difference that they will notice is probably only gonna be the size. It's not gonna be the quality. It's not gonna be the stuffs.
Quite sure when Larry comes in to assess the value, he's not going to look across the street. He's, he's gonna look at each house.
They're comparable house.
Yeah. They won't be?
They're not applesauce.
Yeah.
You're a comparable apple.
As far as, you know, putting in a new house that's a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred thousand dollars as opposed to the higher, again, it's the only thing you're probably gonna notice is size because they're gonna have to go with the covenants. They're gonna, you know, it's still gonna be a new build. It's still gonna be attractive.
Probably have a warranty inside of it. And the lots that are set aside for these LMI's are not capable of sustaining a much larger house than what that footprint will have.
So, I understand their concerns, but it's, it's not necessary.
Makes sense. I guess it's looking for some direction. I'd like to get, you know, what's the next step in doing this? If we can use the money from the TIF, which would be in its spirit, that's what it would be used for.
Yes.
Because we have to pull it out and use it for LMI. It would be one of those back things, that is back investing in their own future by encouraging people to build.
I'd be all for it.
Any thoughts, Bob? So, I guess I'm looking for some direction to give Chris. Got one from Nate says, I'm all for it. So, anybody else?
Well, it's discussion.
Yeah, we should wanna give directions. We wanna give more information on it when you say, hey, forget it.
No, no.
So?
So, it's not, it's not forget it.
Right, that's right.
Find out what else they has to offer, get some more details on it.
Bring it back.
Maybe see if Matt wants to come talk to us.
Okay.
Get it on the agenda to consider whatever.
Farmer's Savings Bank is also advertising, they had a meeting, I know, a few weeks ago. Are they?
I think they would be able to participate as well in this because they're, they're also FDIC institution. I don't, I'm not sure how the Federal Home Loan Bank of Des Moines works with, with credit unions if there's different rules for that. I'm not sure because if you're familiar with Federal Home Loan Bank of Des Moines, it's just basically a bank for banks is what it is. So, you, me, anybody else can't just go to Des Moines, the Federal Home Loan Bank and get a house loan or mortgage there. They, but they do provide the funds to the local banks for these kind of programs.
So, also like regions in US bank could also potentially be?
I believe so.
I'm quite sure that. You're saying they're discriminating what banks are gonna go?
Yeah, we can go with the program, but we don't have to be exclusive to Cedar Valley Bank.
No.
Correct. I believe that that's correct. I would ask Matt. I'm gonna invite Matt.
I'm pretty sure it's just a grant program. I don't think it's gonna be specific to the bank.
Right. Long as they qualify.
Yep. All righty. Any other questions on that? Moving on. Need motion to approve the final placement number three retained for United Contracting Services for the Airport Field Dispenser Improvement Project. Essing and Star. Well, is it working?
It's working. I used it last week.
It's working well?
I watched it use it last week.
It worked well?
Oh, God.
Y'all needed two by fours.
It's a nice installation. Everything enclosed in a stainless steel box. Keep the weather out of all the workings and pumps and hoses and reels and stuff.
Don't have to beat on it with anything?
No. The card reader is weatherproof as well, so we should get by without a lot of maintenance in the future.
It's happy?
Yeah. It's a good system.
As long as you're happy.
Well, Airport Board approved it last week, the final payment.
Any other questions? Roll call?
Far?
Yep.
Essing?
Yep.
Star?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Elway?
Yes.
Are you changing?
Yeah.
You guys start asking for a whole bunch of stuff. All righty. Need motion to approve the completion and final acceptance for the Airport Field Dispenser Project. Any discussion that's just been done, all right?
Yes.
Questions? Roll call?
Edwards?
Yep.
Essing?
Yes.
Elway?
Yeah.
Far?
Sure.
Star?
Yes.
All right. Now's the time to discuss the strategic planning workshop session.
Chris? Mr. Mayor, I have a deal for you.
What I saw.
We could get a strategic planning session and make a hundred dollars as a city. How does that sound?
All about increasing the general fund by a hundred bucks.
Well, unfortunately, Mr. Defshat has retired from the Institute and the Institute, the Institute of Public Affairs and the University of Iowa has decided to eliminate the Institute of Public Affairs. So, that's unfortunate, but did, was contacted by somebody who actually is, is doing strategic planning for cities and municipalities and this is what's before him.
Okay. Great. Can you? Can you Google that name for me? Can you, can you Google that name for me?
Oh, Elizabeth Hansen?
Yeah.
Is there an issue?
Possibly.
Okay.
I did. She was the city administrator for Windsor Heights.
Not any longer.
No. So...
Might be a reason for that.
Yeah. Before I commit to somebody to go teach a strategic planning, I want to make sure that she's qualified to do so.
Okay.
So...
We'll do.
So just...
Tentative in the calendar? No.
We can table this.
Well, let's just, well, it's just my discussion anyhow, we're not doing anything.
Right.
I just thought of that. I think, and maybe she's very qualified, I just want to know for sure. Yep. I'll let you all go Google it yourselves.
All right.
Perfect. So we're going to just table that, setting up that final date until we get some more information on it.
Sure will.
And see if there's anybody else that might do that, I don't... Is there any local people that do that kind of thing, leadership training? I don't know.
I could ask the league as well.
Let's just see. I mean, if you get good reviews from her, go find out, get some references and see what happens.
Sure can.
Is Cindy Kendall from...
Oh, I thought she was beginning to retire from ISU as well. Yeah, she, she was doing, she was, she was in Marshalltown, now she was doing...
She settled down a little bit before...
Before Jeff.
Yeah.
So, okay.
About IDM from you and I.
Yeah. I, I couldn't look it up.
That's not who did it last time?
No, it was Jeff Shaw.
No, Jeff did it last time.
He wasn't with...
No.
Oh, he's just independent?
No, he was, each university has their own institute. He was with the University of Iowa, not Northern Iowa.
Gotcha.
So anyhow, let's just look at our options.
Okay.
All right, moving on to new business. Need motion to approve the resolution transfer funds from the General Fund of the Library Fund.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Oh, I did hear him, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Star.
Yes.
Har.
Yeah.
Essing.
Yes.
All right. You're welcome.
I think that's a thank you.
That's what I said, you're welcome.
Do you want the check delivered tomorrow or are you gone?
I will. Yeah, yeah, I can tomorrow get it. Or you can just deposit it.
Can you?
No. Yeah, Neil? They let you?
A motion to approve the resolution for senior office designation.
Motion.
All right. Chris, you want to elaborate? I didn't, I see the chief didn't make it. What do you want to do?
Officer Alex McCarran has been certified for seven years now, and after you've been certified for five years, you become eligible to have, to be promoted to a senior police officer. $50 cents an hour, and they have to designate.
And that is according to our union contract.
Yep.
Sure is. So, you're doing a good job, so. Anybody got any questions? Roll call.
Elway.
Yes.
Har.
Yeah.
Essing.
Yes.
Edwards.
Yes.
Congratulations. All right. Now we need a motion to consider the purchase of a submersible mixer for digester. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Okay.
Do more specific, please.
Motion by far.
There's two choices.
The choices, we just have to make a motion.
And then you can amend it if you can.
What is your motion, though?
To discuss it first.
To purchase which one?
Isn't that what we're going to discuss?
Discussing. We've got five more.
The one I made, the one I made the recommendation, the one for my mill. Is the one?
I made a motion to discuss it.
Of which one?
So we can understand why we're going to go with the expensive one.
So right now, we have a motion to have to discuss your submersible digesters, and then at some point, we can amend it to...
So this one's going to save $1,600?
Compared to the direct drive on the variable speed line, yes. It's more expensive, but we can dial it down when we're not, when the tank isn't quite as full, or if we got, it's a little bit thicker, we can dial it up, so it'll stir a little bit better. The old submersible pumps, they drew from one little spot by, you know, the digester that pumped it to a cluster and it blew it out, but we always had, you know, beaches around the outside, and when the engineers started with V and K, I approached them and asked them, you know, is there something better out there? And that's when they talked about these white pumps, and I'm sure you're familiar with, with those you probably installed several of those.
Why did I think this was going to be part of the sewer?
Oh, it should be part of the sewer, but we do need to pump.
We're not doing anything with the digester. As far as, what's that?
I thought we were, for some reason.
We're just going to do a press.
I knew that.
But then we could use this after the upgrades.
Yeah, that's, well, if it's gone, they, ready to be replaced by their...
But every time we have to rebuild those pumps, it's, it's over $9,000.
You're just rebuilding submersibles, they're not even mixers, right?
Right, they're just a submersible pump that pumps it to a cluster that blows it out with the air. So this is supposed to be designed where it's, it's going to blow it, and it's going to circulate it, and hopefully get rid of those beaches. It shouldn't plug up with the rags and all that other stuff that we, we have in our sewer system, so.
So how is it going to be controlled with the VFD?
They'll put that up on the side of the tank.
So that's going to be all included in there?
Yeah.
Is it going to have the capabilities of tying into the SCADA system, I guess, that's going to be part of the new sewer plant?
Yeah, we'll have to run a cable or something out there, you know, a duct out there.
A duct for fiber, right, for it?
Right, right.
Which I assume that we can have included in our sewer plant, to make sure that is integrated into the system.
As far as running it to the SCADA system?
So when we get our new sewer plant upgraded, this is part of the plan to make sure it's integrated in the system, so we don't have to pay for it again.
Right, right.
How long would it, do you anticipate lasting?
Hopefully a lot longer than these pumps. The first pump went out in spring. Yeah, six months ago, and then this one, the second one, it stopped working two months ago. So, and the last time they was rebuilt was October of 13 and October of 14, so. Those old ones only lasted six years if that.
Is there any more benefit other than cost savings on that?
You get a better mix, you get more, better dissolved oxygen.
Yeah, it's going to mix better. We can adjust it if we need to. Right now, like I said, it just draws from one spot. Well, that sludge is too thick to migrate over there to it, so it just kind of blows it out and leaves it in the...
Can we just get new D O sensors?
For the aeration tanks, yes.
Not for that one.
Not for that, no.
I guess what I'm wondering is, is it going to hold up longer than the other one would do?
It's what it's designed to be.
I've had experience with lights myself.
This other one for $25,000?
It's the same thing. These are the same pump, just one's a direct drive, so it'll be high speed all the time. Even when the tank's only half full, it's going to run max.
You don't want that, you want to be able to adjust that. Basically, if you have, let's say, a rain event or something like that, you want to be able to adjust it as you can.
I amend my motion to purchase the recommended pump.
What's the meaning? Adaptive Intelligent Compact Mixer Option, very old, the frequency...
That's a five, about a five and a half year payback in it. Would anticipate that.
With the cost savings?
With those pumps, though, if you get D O sensors for the mixing tank, the D O sensors can be hooked up to that VFD, and they'll automatically regulate depending on if oxygen is in there.
So sweet.
It is so sweet. Electrical savings. What everybody's moving to.
And I would second the amended motion.
No, I understood every word.
Any other questions? So where is this coming from?
Uh, sewer.
Electric, you said?
A sewer replacement?
So we have those, a sewer replacement.
We also do need a, a winch to pull it up.
Isn't that on here?
No. No, because I have...
It's a lifting cable assembly.
The cable comes with it, of course.
You didn't get the fancy rigmarole you wanted, did you?
No, somebody told me no. Not going to name names.
You name it all you want.
With your nine hundred thousand dollars worth of requests.
I don't want that.
Now you need what?
Need a winch to be able to pull it out. I mean, that's only 400 pounds compared to the 2,500 that our digester pumps are. They bid a price of $5,700 for a winch and, I assume, installation.
For the dabba crane, they bid you $5,700?
Yeah. And I looked it up online, and yeah, I could probably get that with electric order for...
I think when you justify the population, it's unfeasible. It is.
Nobody complains, so they can't flush their toilet.
That's the truth.
It's one of those hidden benefits of...
So do you need another motion for that?
No, our first motion is to buy the $36,000.
Yep.
So roll call on that.
Well, plenty of...
Plenty of more questions, discussion.
Maybe we go back to the winch?
Then the roll call first.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Edwards?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Har?
Yeah.
Elway?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
All right, where's the winch?
I probably didn't get that, I just got that, I think yesterday or today I printed it off, so I have it here if you'd like to look at it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll take it. I'll make some phone calls tomorrow. Does it benefit me or not? Yeah.
I don't foresee half the...
There you go.
Pull it right out.
I got him on screen dial.
No, 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 and we do not have a count yet.
All righty, need a motion to consider the distribution of the hotel motel tax to Benton Unlimited.
So moved. Second.
I didn't have anything new happily to put, but we probably received $11,000 this month, as close to $13.65 last year, which, so somebody must have got caught up in their submission to Des Moines, so 75% turns out to be this $83,000 figure type on your agenda.
So Melissa's here because she has some ideas about using these funds that she brought up a long time ago, and I thought it might be a good time for her to...
That was, that remained in 25, so with this 75%, we have a grant application put together. We're going to have a committee meeting again at the end of the month to review and make sure it's as we wish. We'd have the grant application open in November, collect grants November, December, and start awarding in like January or February, because a lot of the other grants that are out there, like Benton Community and Benton Community Foundation award now in July, August, September. So can you say what the grants are really for? So the groups that apply, we would be awarding, it has to be spent on tourism-related stuff. It's spelled out in state code. It can be for facilities, it can be for recreation center, community center, museums, monuments, or general tourism-related things. So if the art guild wants to, needs to print new brochures of old corn statues, can be spent on that, can be spent on an event that I'm having, that the library's having, that the art guild is having.
Something we were having an event, I didn't know.
There, there's a lot of opportunity to, to spend this money on, so the committee that will review them is a city council member, which I think Nathan has been appointed and they're volunteer, a parking rack member, and then someone from our tourism committee.
So I'm doing these for like the wall dogs.
So it's a maximum of $500 per application?
Maybe, as of right now.
As of right now?
Right. We may want to consider changing that, increasing that.
And that's just for the 75%?
Yes.
25% comes to the city?
Yes.
Does that 25% have to be used on tourism as well?
No.
That just goes in our...
That can just go in a general fund?
I have an idea for that 25% too.
Which is?
I had come this spring and talked about creating that business incentive grant program to take that 25% and turn it around, and again, investing back, back into the community. So if a business needs a new awning, they need some signage, they could be help with some acquisition costs on new space or remodeling or anything like that. So I have a draft of that put together, of what it could look like. I just took bits and pieces from different communities that have programs like this. So I don't know if I would turn it over to you guys, if you all have a review, if you want to send it to a committee.
That's what I was just going to say, I would like to get that to my general government, Community and Economic Development, we need to have you come and present that and review it. That'd be...
I think it would make sense for that business incentive grant to start July 1st, like the next fiscal year or so.
We had, we came up with an estimated dollar, figured that'd be after the year. I don't remember what that was. Trying to extract the later value, how much we'd have in there to do that.
Well, if there's...
I don't remember what 20,000 happened front of me.
There was $11,000. I mean, there'd be, we'll say $25,000 in a year into that pod. A quarter would come back to the city. So...
Six to $7,000.
Yeah.
Potentially.
So it's not a ton, but again, that will continue to grow.
But on that same notion, I'd like to make sure we bring that up during the discussions for that same fund, if it becomes viable or feasible to do so. Anything else? All right, any other questions about getting it distributed? Roll call.
Har.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
I need a motion to consider sidewalk reimbursement to Essing Properties. 612, 614. Yeah. Did you call when you missed out this time?
I don't know. I didn't think you did. It was planned.
All right, roll call. Is that a roll call?
Elway?
Yes.
Har?
Yeah.
Star?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yeah.
Essing?
All right, need a motion to consider the sidewalk reimbursement to Essing Properties again at 906 East National. Thank you for doing all your sidewalks.
One more?
So moved.
Say.
Roll call.
Edwards?
Yep.
Elway?
Yes.
Har?
Yeah.
Star?
Yes.
I need a motion to consider the sidewalk reimbursement to Ken Stru at 415 West 13th Street.
So moved.
Second. This looks good, too. Roll call.
Star?
Yes.
Har?
Yeah.
Essing?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
So all of those, I have had several comments to my ear about the five-foot width, how great that is compared to what we have.
Indeed.
So I've had comments that it's really annoying. Words going back and forth, but I heard people walking down them. It's so nice to have enough of them that you can walk sideways.
You can walk sideways.
Do we have a stretch long enough to?
Marsha did. That's a good one. Cam did some of his.
I, I think it, I agree.
That's what all gets done.
It's a good segment.
Great.
Need to do it throughout town.
Keep on going. All righty. Now's the time to be set the work session with E O R engineers for the wetland project. Chris, throw that back at us.
Sure. Um, E O R, Adam Rodenburn from Middle Cedar Watershed Management Authority, and Mary Beth Stevenson from the Iowa D N R would like to come at six o'clock, uh, your next council meeting, um, to go over their watershed management report and their design for the wetland project with counsel.
And you were- Next meeting, is that what you're thinking?
Next meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Or- Next meeting. Or the next meeting. They did drop this off ahead of time.
Okay.
So they would like to go over that with you in depth.
Perfect. Are we looking at six o'clock then?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Twenty-six. Got her? Oh, be it. Now I assume you'll send out a notice to me to make sure everything's-
I'll put it in there.
Perfect. All righty. By the set. We both got it. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll start with the unusual. Had a call from a resident, Ms. Lola Brown. She has a request, had a request of, she would like her driveway sidewalk and retaining wall redone. Have the city pay for it and then have it put on her taxes. I said, "We don't do that," but she wanted me to ask anyway.
Where are they?
This is on Third and Third. Just got done with the project.
Fourth avenue.
Fourth, fourth and third.
She having a financial hardship, is-
Not that aware of it.
Is that she can apply for the loan?
I, I'm not aware of it. And I would bring the request.
I saw it online.
Okay. Well, we can do the sidewalk.
Yeah, I, I did it for her. We could do the sidewalk.
Now, just seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Correct. So, okay. I'm moving on.
Third and Fourth?
Third and Fourth.
Okay.
Okay. Have interviews with the architectural firms for the emergency services facility on Monday and Tuesday, uh, with, uh, the fire chief, uh, police chief, Scott Geisinger, and also Gary McKenna as well. That's gonna be at, um, the fire station on Monday and Tuesday. Uh, um, on the twenty-sixth, um, having a visit, um, here in Vinton by the chief executive or pretty much the head of the National Flood Insurance Program. It's coming from Washington, D.C. to visit Vinton the twenty-sixth of September. So, um, just want a council to be aware of that visit. And also finally, um, tomorrow morning, myself, Melissa, and, um, Dennis Lazar are having a meeting, um, in Cedar Rapids with Hobart Historic Restoration.
How did the visit from the Lieutenant Governor go?
No, go ahead.
Oh, it, well, I thought, what do you think?
I thought it was very, well, I stayed for the whole thing. Very similar to what I promised for the visit. So, um, it was good.
That was very good.
Anything else?
Um, for my report, that's about it. I was going to go over the Freedom Farms LLC thing. Is that what you're asking about?
No. Is that your report?
No.
Oh, that wouldn't be your report. Throw it out there.
Okay. Um, got notification on one of our nuisance properties, um, that, uh, it has changed hands. It would be the, the, um, the steam plant has changed hands to, uh, Freedom Farms LLC. I've had to do some checking, uh, find out what Freedom Farms LLC was, and they're, I think, I believe they're based out of Alabama, and maybe doing, uh, they're growing alternative types of crops. That's why I'm just gonna leave it at that.
So, as we said, that we know there's a new owner. They are now in violation of our city code, so they should probably get a letter right away.
Yes, and I've already sent the information to Jerry.
What's an alternative crop?
Well, yes. It's not barley. It's not a whole thing.
Are they growing mushrooms?
It could be, but it's, I guess it's something that could be converted to rope.
I mean, that's how you relate, so.
What?
Why would they even mention that?
Watch, you could know.
I did not.
They don't have to grow it.
This is what that farm does.
That's what they own.
They're the new owners of the building. They don't think they have any intentions of having a crop there.
But they might be able to do-
I wonder how they, what's their connections to the previous owners?
Well, I don't know. They, they would like to hire veterans. That's all I know.
And I think, oh, we just inherited any?
Yes.
On us.
Maybe they'll be good.
Maybe they will.
That is all I-
We'll find out. Freedom Farms?
LLC.
Google that one, too. Anything else?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Ah, much gas.
But we did receive a favorable ruling on our Osborne case.
To this point?
So.
Are they gonna appeal?
I haven't, I haven't heard. When do they, the, start paying back? Is it gonna be on taxes? What was the?
I don't know what their plans are. They say-
It'll go on their taxes in June.
It doesn't matter. It was a payable fine back to them, wasn't it? It was seven hundred and fifty on each, on each case, which are five cases plus over seventeen thousand cleanup expenses. And she did not say that will be assessed to your property tax. That should, that is reimbursable to the city event. I think it's however.
And that is a very comparable.
So how quickly does it have to be?
If I assume if they don't start paying, we have to get a violation, I guess.
Yeah, we fulfilled our end of the ruling already.
Right.
And we had to inform the prop, the owners of the truck, where the location of the truck was. We had done that, and, um, police officer delivered it in person, and also mailed, say, um, that letter.
How much time do I have to appeal? Twenty days.
Twenty days.
We're still within that twenty days, obviously.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Not to rain on that little celebration, but has anybody been by there lately?
Yep. Hate to have to start all over.
Hi.
Police? Got anything?
No, there.
Sure? How's the dog?
Good.
You brought him in, or, oh, man, you brought him in.
Yeah, right. He's everywhere.
He's all right. We're dog-friendly. I hope he's not everywhere. He's doing his job. I hope he's not doing anything. Anyhow.
And Melissa went above and beyond a few weeks ago.
Absolutely. So she sure did.
Big round of applause.
Yes.
That Sesko said Tennyill Week was phenomenal. Again and again.
Your connection with the good Lord sure worked out.
I don't know what I did, but it was perfect.
It was. Really perfect. Girls end up, except the one guy is kind of chugging on for a little bit. He wanted to be the last guy, but it all worked out. Everything's good, nothing but compliments. Boomtown was a rousing success, so. I told him they had a little bit, a lot to own up to for next year, so, yeah.
And we don't have to worry about it again.
And we don't have to worry about it, yeah. Unless you want.
Huh?
Unless you want. We always do make a donation.
You want me a hundred fifty years?
Yeah. I asked her if she wanted to a one fifty-one.
Forty-eight hundred years of corn again, you haven't seen either.
I actually think that didn't go that badly.
No, but it was a lot of corn.
Lot of corn. Well, Ronnie showed me how to shuck corn.
Right.
Next time, just serve canned corn.
There was a cannon plant there, so. There was a cannon plant here, right?
Yes.
So.
Canic horn, I understand.
Canic horn.
So the Vinton Viking football team is undefeated so far this year, which is fantastic, which I haven't seen in a long time, but they actually started out two and O. Cosby Development's done. I heard there's three lots sold already.
Can't technically do it yet.
Well, potentially, three lots are about to-
So good for it. Building's downtown getting worked on. That's exciting.
Yeah. A little.
Three.
Three?
Three?
The Nets, Lows, Wests, and Manches. Or Cleanings.
Oh, yeah. William's getting in there, huh?
Still getting worked on.
Yeah, they are. Things are cleaned up.
Yeah.
That's fantastic. Tamaskey pays off. Damn. There's no other good welfare. Oh, sorry. I forgot all about you.
Old Hardee's is getting demolished. I-
Should be down by tomorrow.
Is it?
What?
Yeah.
Oh, I forgot to tell you, yeah. It's supposed to be gone by tomorrow.
Boy, things are such your mind.
Sorry.
Old Hardee's, um, Board of Adjustments met last evening, I believe. That's-
Bob? You were there?
Done before. How did that happen?
The Board of Adjustments.
Board of Bala?
Never mind. It's taken care of.
Yeah.
Uh, Chris has abated the taxes on four of the properties.
Oh, yeah, the houses.
Um, we've got some city hall lights are out and red from the electric department. Hopefully, he's gonna be working on them for us. And the old squeaky chairs are gone.
Thank you.
Where'd they go?
I don't know. The guy didn't help. They haven't got paid yet for the-
Oh, the gov deal dot com.
Oh, I have got home for it. It'll be eight, eight one bucks or something.
Nice.
Making money.
And-
Oh. You get that general fund back up there yet?
Um, when we start doing budget this year, I think you need to start about a month earlier because the Senate filed six thirty-four that limits the increase to two percent of the basic levies from last year. You have to have an extra here, you have to have an extra resolution, so I think we need to start easy a month earlier. So.
November.
Okay.
No wonder we started having people come last time. It seemed like we hadn't laid last year. Usually I'm right at the beginning of January, don't we?
Oh.
We used to.
But we had, but we need, yeah, we need, yeah.
We have to do it in Christmas time.
So we'll start doing budget sessions early. November, December? Get going?
No, no.
So is it something that we can, when we're going through this budget, there's obviously this bunch of contractual items that we can't really change?
Right.
So can we just call those out and do actually concentrate on the things that we can change?
Yeah, but, okay.
Well, to me, that makes more sense rather than, hey, we can't do anything with these, so why are we even discussing that?
But you, but you also have a responsibility to see it all.
Well, well, but I'd rather focus on the things we can change first, and then we can combine them with the overall.
Okay.
I think I might clean it up a little bit and stop my confusion. So.
There's a lot of pages to it.
Yeah, there's a lot of pages to it.
It's getting more this year. Anything else, Cindy?
No, that's all.
Sorry, papers skipping you there. When, when do papers have to be?
The nineteenth of September, like five o'clock. And it has to be turned in here. I would, I was telling people they could go to the courthouse and Gina said, "No, no, no. You're designated person, so."
Well, it has to be turned in here. Nineteenth by five P.M. Is that when you leave?
I like leaving at four thirty, but- No, maybe six, five. I have to stay till five, so.
Any other people take papers out?
I have, uh, three back here. I didn't say.
Lovely. Okay.
There's a game on this weekend.
Iowa State?
Hey, since, uh, Van County has their, um, open house, I'll invite everybody to our open house, our ninetieth year.
Oh, I do.
At the plumbing shop.
What are you gonna have?
We're gonna have some chili, I think. Some, maybe some little mini sandwiches.
Oh, I thought you were gonna have-
Axe throwing. Uh-
Axe throwing?
Unfenced.
Unfenced. Well, yeah, just have each other.
Can we, yeah. Tennis doubles match?
Yeah. Um, you can enter for a chance to win a free furnace and lots of prizes. That's October twelfth.
Oh.
So you get some time.
Need not be present to win?
Correct. You have to be there to put your name in the box.
Oh, I'm gonna come eat.
So it's from one to four, and, yeah.
Now I feel plumbing companies have each other.
Yeah, I know. What's up?
Well, we just expect following Monday that we'll have-
Several calls. Well, thank you for the invite. Congratulations to the whole family, because you've been partying here a long time, so. Anything else?
I think that should've been under, that was just communication.
Yeah, because it's nothing on our agenda to even discuss.
This letter, this letter, this from-
Oh, yeah, just an update on, uh, it's more for Ron Asensio than anybody, but.
I'm the one that asked for it.
What, that letter? Oh, for the, right, right.
Oh, no.
So he didn't hear anything up there and?
Where'd we end up with the swimming pool?
We saw.
It healed itself.
And so we just assumed that we didn't do any more investigation from that point?
We're gonna investigate.
I don't know. I'm not that guy.
He's the guy that asks questions, doesn't come up with answers.
I had a gentleman call me up, want me to come see about fixing a potential air leak, and I said, "Where's that?" And he goes, "Well, it's not leaking yet." I said, "So where do you want me to check?" He goes, "Well, just go see if it's going to." I said, "Okay, I'll come up, but you're gonna get billed." I know what you billed me to come up and, well. It's quite an odd, odd conversation. So do you know my chance? What Devin did for that saddle out at that main, when he tapped into it?
As far, it was a live tap.
It was a live tap?
Right.
We didn't cut into it? He did, he did it all himself and drill into it?
No, Rod Klauser.
Who did?
Rod Klauser out of Ames or somewhere out there came and did the live tap. So all Devin did was dig it and then put the pipes in after, after Klauser did the live tap. So he put a saddle on, drilled it and tapped it, and the valve was right there.
Yeah. No way that valve could've spun down there and cut down the floor.
Uh, I wouldn't say that.
We made the records, we did the live tap, make sure he recovered the pump and everything, but he-
Yeah, yeah. He had the pump, yeah. When he pulled it out, we didn't see that, so. Yeah, that's possible.
I was, I'm just trying to think of-
But I can't believe it would spin that far, and I'm sure they would've blocked it up.
It'd almost impossible.
Right.
If they torqued everything right, how they're supposed to, it should be fine.
Right. Put blocks under it, everything, so.
Oh, I'm gonna take this to the hospital board eventually.
I don't see how an eight-inch main with an eight-inch feed cannot give them enough water to do whatever they need to.
I don't either. It's not a pressure, so elevation of the tower, I assume is getting fed by the one on the east side. Two stories of hospitals. What's the pressure difference between the elevation of the water tower and the...
Every foot is...
I know, so what's the difference?
Are you on it?
Yeah.
Hour many feet, yeah.
I was wondering if it's...
But why did...
Four dollars here, they put the building up now are almost equal out. The pressure isn't gonna be that much.
But they claim it worked at first, up until April. Well, they said they'd check it every week or once a month or whatever.
Have they said anything else for a while, or have they got adequate pressure now, or it's just still, well?
I think it's still, it, it'll work for, you know, thirty seconds, and then it just starts dropping back off, so...
I asked, asked the one at board meetings about it, and nobody had any idea about it. Nobody had heard any complaints or anything?
The RPZ was, was leaking back, and then that valve after the RPZ was, we discovered it, must have been partially... Well, it was broke, so whether it was partially shut, wide open, or what, but it didn't work, so I finally got him to replace that. And that's when it started working a little bit better for a little bit longer till it started running out of water, so...
I think if it was an elevation issue, it'd be consistent.
Right, it would have done it right away.
I have just, because I just, if something works just fine from here, we flushed the mains, but they can't find any residual in anything, but it will...
No one else is complaining in there.
Alright, I call for a German.